We're a little late beginning our caucus this evening. It is 5:54 PM. Okay, council members, we are going to call our meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Patrowski will lead the roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Majors. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Daniels. We do have a change in our communications. The essay contest winners will not be joining us this evening, but they will be joining us at our future legislative session in June. They wanted to ensure that their principal and their parents could attend and hear them read their essays. So instead, during that time, I will have the introduction of our new Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Michael Parker. Then we will have courtesy of the floor, approval of our minutes for the legislative session that was held on April 26, 2022. Please take a moment to review those minutes. Then we will have reports of committees. I will begin with the reporting on the work session of May 3, 2022. Next, we will have a report from Chair Green on the work session of May 3, 2022. And the final report will come from Chair Madsen on the work session of May 3, 2022. Ordinances for first reading, we have none. Ordinances for amendment, we have none. Ordinances for final passage, we have none. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 14 of 2022. We will suspend the rules for discussion on this resolution. Resolution 20 of 2022, as you know, has been moved from the Public Safety Committee to the Administration Committee, and we will be voting on this resolution. Resolution 21 of 2022. We will be voting on this. Resolution 24 of 2022. We will once again suspend the rules just to clarify the sequential order in which the resolutions were received, between Resolution 24 and Resolution 20. And then we will vote. Resolution 25, we will vote on this one. And Resolution 26, we will vote. Is there any old business for discussion, council members?
I have a question for legal, then.
Okay.
So last week, and it's just clarification. Councilman Majors mentioned if we funded the State Street project just with city funds, would that mean we negate having to get the state's input?
No, it's their road.
Okay, it's their road. Okay, so we have a clarification there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know if it's old business or new business, but just restating about the teen summit. I know I did it last week, so I guess that would be old.
Sure, it's fine. Okay, so we'll have a teen summit reminder for old business. Any other old business, council members? Okay, hearing none. Any new business?
Yes, I'll have one note of new business just to, I guess, remind and alert people of a program that's available to help residents get a reduction on their internet bills. Federal government.
Clarification, are we meeting next week?
No, that was my note of new business. We will not be meeting next week due to Election Day, Tuesday, May 17, so we will not have our meeting. Our next legislative session will be held the following Tuesday, on Tuesday, May 24, which I share then too. Any other new business? Okay, we'll get started in about a minute. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, good evening, everyone. The time is 6 o'clock PM. I would like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Patrowski, could you please do the roll call?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green? Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Majors.
Thank you, President Bowers. We could all bow our heads in a moment of silence. We just want to continue to remember our residents of Harrisburg as we're still dealing with this pandemic and also the gun violence in Harrisburg, and just ask for prayers and peace for all those that have been victims of gun violence in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance this evening will be led by Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you. As I mentioned during our caucus, we do have a change in the agenda for the communications portion. We will hear from the essay contest winners at a future legislative session in June, but I did want to take an opportunity to introduce to some, reintroduce to others, our Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Michael Parker.
Thank you.
Oh, if you could, you can come here and just say hello. If you want to just reintroduce yourself. There is, there's a button on the mic, too. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank everyone for their warm welcome. Madam President has been especially supportive and very, you know, in contact with me, you know, and keeping on top of how things are going with myself. I am so honored and pleased to be able to serve with you, and it touches my heart to see a new generation of leaders that have grown up to become that next generation of leaders. So, you know, some of you I've watched grow up, some of you I may have had in school. So it just, it warms my heart to be able to see what God has done with your lives and to be able to put you in place of our next generation of leaders. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'll do everything in my power to, you know, be that support system and help out wherever needed and whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. At this time, we will entertain courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone by far right who would like to offer public comment?
Ron Johnson, 1847 Zarca Street, the Chair of the Neighborhood Square Watch School. I just wanted, I know I sent y'all awesome texts thanking y'all for showing up to our meeting last Thursday and the importance of community engagement. I'm seeing more and more every day, and I realize that a lot of our residents are in uncharted territory when it comes to city government and how it works. There was an incident about 4 o'clock on 19th and Market where the state police had chased a vehicle, and they turned the corner, flipped over on its side, and they had to use the jaws of life to get the two young men out. The two young men, I understand, had two weapons in the car and had some drugs in the car. The neighbors were out complaining, and I told them, I said, see, this is the importance of following me down here to City Council Chamber so that you can learn a few things. So don't start complaining unless you decide to follow me, because, you know, we have to have a seat at the table as residents. And I've been doing this so long, you know, I started reciting some stuff to them. They didn't want to hear it, but I'mma keep on them till I get them all to come down here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the far-right section that would like to offer public comment?
Caitlin McDonough, I live in Bellevue Park. I watched the meeting last week. There are a lot of people here with a lot to say. My question for you is, where is the record of their comments?
Where's the record of the comments from the last work session?
Yeah.
So in the work sessions, we do not provide minutes for work sessions. However, the meetings are live and they're streamed on YouTube.
So the record is the YouTube video? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
I'm just wondering if everyone that came up and spoke so passionately last week is aware that there's not a record like the minutes for legislative session of their comments? Do you think that they're aware of that?
I'm not sure. I do know that they are aware of the means in which they can review former council meetings. So I do believe they are aware of YouTube, Facebook. Channel 20 also airs our meetings live and replays them throughout the week. So I do believe they are aware of the means in which they can, but I'm not sure that they were aware of a formal written record.
And with YouTube being the record, how can we be sure that their comments, their concerns are being addressed as the State Street fiasco continues to unfold?
I can't speak for the administration, but there were administrative staff members present, and I do have an update to share during the new business portion relative to State Street.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything that City Council plans to do to ensure that the concerns are addressed or taken into account?
And I can't speak for council, but I think at the very least, we have gotten the conversation moving. Things are happening now since all of the residents on State Street participated in our meeting and were very vocal. At the very least, they know that those concerns were heard. So I think that that's the first step in terms of action items and a plan. I think that the residents and other members of the community can participate in the upcoming public meetings and again, express those concerns directly to PennDOT officials, the construction company, and Dowwood Engineering.
And how does City Council plan to ensure that that happens? That those comments are taken into account?
This is a public comment period. There is not a right or obligation to cross-examine City Council members in a public meeting. I mean, they're being very indulgent with you, but I'm saying that is the reality. It's public comment. That's what it's called. And so that is what it is.
Okay, well, I will reframe that and say, I lived in the city for about four years now. I deliberately chose to move here on purpose, bought a house here because we wanted to live here, and it's been exhausting to be a resident of this city, which is silly. I can't even count in just that short period of time how many times I have thought myself, how many times I have heard other people bring up that the lack of communication in this city is infuriating and very, very frustrating for residents. And so I would challenge the council to do something about it, to ensure, to change something, to do something different. Because trusting the administration has not, I understand there's been a change in administration. So we have that. However, accountability doesn't change with administrations. There has to be accountability, and City Council is the body to do that. All the sheer amount of money that is being thrown around with the State Street dumpster fire, I just, it's... I'm sure you feel the same frustrations that I do with that. And so where is the accountability? When all of these resolutions come up, that's a million-dollar contract for consulting, for this, that, or the other thing. What is the follow-up? What is the return on that? What is the plan for that? Where does that money go? What do we get for it? What did we get for all the money that was already? However much money was, does anyone know how much money was actually spent already that we cannot get back with the State Street mess? Willing to bet it's in the millions somewhere? It's based on the resolutions that I'm seeing? On the State Street topic, I heard a lot of people last week say they don't see any bikes, so they don't want any bike lanes. Speaking for myself, I would love to ride my bike. I only, I live two miles away from where I work. It would be incredible to be able to ride my bike to work and not have to drive two miles, but I don't feel safe doing that because there's no bike lanes. So I am glad to hear that that is a mandatory part of the project. I don't remember who was it that said last week, if it was you, that we're probably not going to make everybody happy. I want to say that making people happy is not the goal of this process, should not be the goal of this process, should not be the goal of government in general, to make people happy. People are going to feel however they're going to feel. The goal should be to listen and to respond and to communicate. Because change is scary, and some people are not going to accept it. Regardless of whatever the plan is, there are people who will not accept it. If they understand it, that's going to go a long way, who accepting it. But for the understanding to happen, the communication needs to happen. My other question for the council is, how is this process going to change in the future? What is going to change so that we're not here again? So that there's not a roomful of angry residents saying, why didn't you tell us the next time we spend millions of dollars on a project? What is going to change? Where is the accountability? Mr. Rodriguez, I believe it was you last week that said, asked representatives from the engineering firm, I believe that's who they were, how many times the public was contacted? The answer was, none of us were here at that time. Does the council feel that that's an acceptable answer? Because I don't. I understand that none of them were there at that time, and that's not an acceptable answer. And... I know that PennDOT sent out plans. We got a little mailer to our house giving very detailed plans of the progress of the project on Dairy Street. This is an example of an idea for how to communicate with residents in the future. Social media is not enough. It's not enough. It is not enough. Like something more intentional and significantly more broad than a Facebook post, Twitter update. I know there are a lot of residents that would like to get engaged but are not aware of how to do that or are not aware of when meetings are or are not aware of what is being discussed at what meeting. Because like I said, it's... I can't speak for anyone else, but I know I have to work at that. I have to really try. I did a lot of research just to prepare for this meeting, and... That's silly. So I will look forward to hearing from the council on what is going to change with the accountability in the city, especially when it comes to the millions and millions of dollars that are flowing through here and going into who knows where. And we're not, who knows what we're getting from it? Who knows how we're following up on it? Transparency and accountability. I look forward to hearing from the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the far-right section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, we'll move to the next section. Would anyone like to offer public comment?
My address is 13628 Street. I actually reside in Sussulina Township. However, the event I host is in Harrisburg. Dear council, I wrote something really, really quick. I should only take a lap. Dear council, thank you. Thank you for providing me with a moment to speak. I host Small Business Saturday, Harrisburg. I started Small Business Saturday, Harrisburg in 2020 as a way for small local businesses to display their items. I started not knowing how or what to do. I didn't use a blueprint. I made sure to contact city officials. I also contacted the Harrisburg City Tax Office inquiring about the proper permits that needed to be completed. I was told to apply for a special event permit that would cover vendors for $200. I received the same license in 2021 with no issues. In 2022, I was contacted by the Harrisburg City Tax Office advising I need a different permit prior to me having an event, and also vendors need to have their own vending license as well. I updated my site within days of finding this out and even linked the application for such permits to the page. I have no issue with following rules, but I believe Small Business Saturday, Harrisburg, is being targeted. I've attended and vended at several events on city property where this was never asked of me. I've outreach other organizers and vendors, and all have said the same. They've never been asked to provide a permit. I'm not asking for an investigation into other events, but if Small Business Saturday, Harrisburg, is made to comply with all rules, then everyone else should be held to those same standards. My DJ was even asked to contact, was even contacted asking to provide a permit. I mean, to obtain a permit. This is not happening at other events. I hope you can understand my frustration as I've been hosting this event successfully since 2020. I've had over, well over 300 businesses come through. I've seen most of the elected officials up here come through to this event. I know for a fact that what's being requested of me is not being requested of other events on city property. It is not right. It is not fair for these small businesses. I am literally just giving them a platform. I make very little and sometimes actually pull out of my own pocket to make these events happen. I do not charge a lot of money. I literally try to charge just enough to cover the fees for the DJ because I don't want to undercut anyone. This is not fair what is going on, and I do not like it, and the vendors do not like it. I'm not trying to skip or go over or be illegal or do anything. I just want, I just want to be fair. If my event is being held to a standard, then let all events be held to the same standard. And I can tell you for a fact, it's not happening. I know, I just signed up for several events. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You wouldn't mind staying after the meeting? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the right section? Seeing no one? Anyone in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
That's for 2033 Bellevue Road, Harrisburg. A couple of items on the agenda here. Resolution 20 of 2022 and Resolution 24 of 2022. They are connected. I would like some clarification. Is there an interplay between the two activities? Obviously, there are two different entities involved. One is the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. The other one is the John Jay School. You mentioned suspending the rules on 24. Is there going to be that same discussion around 20 in as much as they are connected? That would be my first question.
I can do that. I wanted to do 24 because I need the administration to clarify in which the sequential order. We should have received Resolution 24 first, basically, and then 20. We have had discussion about Resolution 20, but I'm happy to suspend the rules if there are any questions that council members have.
So I hope there will be some discussion of that. I have to assume that there's an interplay between the two. Nine years ago, I participated in a similar activity. It was a one-off. It disappeared. I certainly hope there's some continuity. I understand that the state has provided some funding, not only to Harrisburg, but to also York, to Philadelphia, to Berks County, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I assume there will be some overlap there and some synergy such that we're not simply doing the same thing all over again and getting nothing to show for it. So any clarification you can provide in your procedure tonight relative to that will be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one? Anyone in the left section?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live in the 1800 block of State Street. First thing I'd like to do is thank the city for putting out the press release talking about the three meetings. One thing that I am not happy about is PennDOT is not sending any representatives to the meeting. And I'm confused. Is State Street a city street? Is it a state street? This is like a child that has no father. Nobody will claim this. You know, who is making these decisions? And if this is a state street, I want to see a state representative... And if this is a state street, I want to see a state representative at that meeting. And it's not, I'm inviting you there. I want you there. You need to be there. You need to face the residents. And the other thing I've been doing since last week, I've been doing a little research on the computer about Vision Zero. I know this is a title that is nationwide. From the first time I heard it, I didn't like it. When I hear that someone has zero vision, that means they can't see. But it is what it is. But the research that I have seen so far, what they did is they not only went to make changes, they did education. They did education of the public, the pedestrians, the drivers, as well as engineers. People had to learn what their roles were, what they're responsible for. Before you go and make a whole lot of changes, educate the people. In addition to that, when we hear about accidents, we hear so-and-so died. But we never hear why that person died. If that person died because they were intoxicated when they were attempting across the street, that statistic goes into the report, but the report doesn't indicate it was the fault of the pedestrian. Now, if we have a child, and children are not responsible for everything that they do, parents, it's hard sometimes to watch your children. But the research that I found, especially up in New York City, it said most of the deaths that were caused by vehicle accidents involve children under the age of 14 and senior citizens crossing the street. So we also have to look at how the pedestrians are involved in these accidents as well as the drivers. They also had a package up there in New York where people signed a pledge on what they would do and what they wouldn't do. They worked together with the community, the engineers, the police, and enforcement. But enforcement is a very big part, and unless we do enforcement, this is not going to work. The second thing I'd like to know from city council is tell me a little bit about city treasury. Is that a fully functional office? How much money were they given? Were they given enough money to only operate 40% of the time, and it's not even 40% of the time because they're not even open all day, the two days that they're open? I'd like to know a little bit more about the city treasury. Why is it not supposed to be a fully functional office or what? I'd like to know. Talk to me.
I believe the treasury treasurer is its own elected official, and you'd have to speak with him about his office. So you would speak with Dan Miller. He's the one that's in charge of Treasury Office. He's the one that makes
What kind of budget do y'all give him?
The budget that he requested was approved.
Was it a full budget or partial?
Everything that he requested was approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to
Real quick, we did get clarification that State Street is a state road.
Correct. It's Pennsylvania controlled.
Yes. No comment there. Just wanted to clarify the state road.
Thank you. You can proceed, Ms. Loretta.
Good evening, Council. My name is Loretta Barbie Dare. I'm with the Summit Terrace Neighborhood Association at 1228 Bailey Street in Hollisburg. I live on Summit Street. Where I've lived for 40 years. I'm here to actually on behalf of Resolution 21-2022, a resolution approving a preliminary final land development and land consolidation to convert the existing building located at 100 North 13th Street into a 12-unit multifamily dwelling and to consolidate 112 North 13th Street and 109 through 119 and 1/2 Linden Street with the same. I understand, and how I actually found out about this was basically last year when the initial developer, Mr. Raylock, and the architect Dawson was doing a hearing, the zoning hearing board, and had presented their plans to the zoning As I was reading through their information originally, they had asked for 12, 14 spaces of parking. Over those few months, it had changed from it had changed from 10 spaces, 11 spaces, to eight spaces. And my only question was, since you already have a building that you're going to put 12 units in, why can't you provide a space for each one of your tenants and the additional one space for every five units? Now, I got that information from your codes, Chapter 7-327 about off-street parking. So if you have 12 units, you should actually provide 14 units. I am not sure how anyone could look at nine parcels and not find 14 spaces of parking. So we have a meeting with the Summit Terrace Neighbors about that, and the architect and the developer actually had At that meeting, they even said that once their contractors get boots on the ground, there should be no problem. Now, that wasn't a writing. That was a good faith effort on their part, which I actually commend them for. Then I didn't hear much about it anymore for the next few months until it came up before council about a month ago. And Ms. Laura from the Camp Curtain Concerned Citizens was the one that was here before you as team council. And I had asked, please give me a moment to read your resolution and to see if there was any objections. In your resolution, it's actually only asking for 13 spaces. And back to the five ordinances where it's saying 12 spaces plus two. I am here tonight to petition the council to actually really take a look at this before you vote on this this evening. I really appreciate the time that all of you have taken to answer my emails, my phone calls, my text messages, my questions. If you are not familiar with the Summit Terrace Neighborhood, that thing fell off last week also. I saw it. 13th and Market, State Street Bridge, State Street Bridge, 13th and Market. Here's Walnut where they're looking at putting the building in, and then Bailey Street. Originally, when I had looked at their plan, not only did I contact our neighbors that were saying, where are they going to put all the cars? Because we're in ACOD, Architectural Conservation Overlay District, I was also concerned about them changing any of the facade of the Capital Publishing Company building, which is the building that they're going to be renovating into the 12 units. So I contacted Pennsylvania Works Society, Hollisburg, in order to let them know and to bring that to their attention also. Now, I do understand COVID kind of threw everybody normal things that went through and transpired and they got off track. Regular schedules that people were on kind of got pushed aside. Everyone was doing whatever they needed to do to get back to what people want to call normal. So I actually was very patient in the amount of time given to them to respond to the association, respond to zoning, planning, anyone else that was interested in this. And then I found out it was here before council. Understanding that these laws are made by you, and you know these codes a lot better than I do, understand the impact of what an additional two cars can have in our neighborhood. 13th and Walnut is a very busy intersection. It's controlled by a light. It's the only light in our neighborhood. That's the only intersection in our neighborhood that's actually controlled. There are students that go there in the morning to pick up the school buses. So you have people going in the morning, mothers, children, folks running out in the street. Same thing in the afternoon, mothers, children, strollers, folks out in the street. Nearby that, there is also a small convenience store. Children get off the bus. They got a dollar in their hand. I'm going to get a bag of Middleworth, and they're going to run across the street. At the same time, they have their traffic pattern coming around Walnut Street. Now, I did hear them say that they were willing to put up signage. But we all know what happens to signs. No one reads them. Grass grows over top of them. You forget it's there. So there may be some tweaking to their original plan that you may have seen even before I came to explain what was going on here. As part of your vote, I hope you take that into consideration. There's two other things in the resolution that you're going to be I did, isn't directly related to the parking, but it was a question that I had, that we had. It's on page three of your resolution. It says, whereas with regards to MBE/WBE participation, the applicant has stated that we are self-performed. I Googled that statement, and I can't understand what self-performed means. So I was hoping that maybe someone here from the Radon group or from the Dawson group could explain that. And the other thing in the very beginning, first paragraph, resolution approving preliminary final land development and lot consolidation, existing building 113th Street into a 12-unit multifamily dwelling. That's the term that I used when I searched it in codes to see as much as we want that development, I cannot wait. I've seen their plans. It is going to be light. It is going to be shining. It is going to be beautiful. If you put anything less than 14 spaces there, you're asking for people to be hit. You're asking for folks like myself who walk a little bit slower to possibly get ran over. And I just think it would be better just, not just for the neighborhood, but for their tenants. I mean, it would be nice with nine parcels to have a place that you know you're going to be able to come home at night and park. That's what I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Deborah Mommy. I live on Royal Terrace in Harrisburg. It's a street that has houses on one side, and on the other side, there's a beautiful array of trees. And those trees had not been cut for many years. They were growing over into the street, the overhangs. And I reached out to city council, and I asked, could that be addressed? And I'm very happy to say that they referred me to Parks and Rec. They've been very responsive. The inspectors came out. They identified what trees needed to be cut, needed to be trimmed, and they come out into the neighborhood. I'm very thankful. My neighbors are thankful, but the job is not finished. So I just wanted to say that to council. We got to make sure we follow up and they get finished with the job. But they are doing a great job, and I'm very thankful, thankful, thankful. I've lived on Royal Terrace almost 30 years, and I think this is the first time trees have been cut. And I love trees. I don't want them cut, taken down. They're beautiful. But I'm very thankful. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Stay after the meeting so I can speak with you about the trees. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Laura Harding. I am, I live in the 2200 block of North 3rd Street, and I'm with Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United. First, I would like to speak to Ms. Loretta Barbie Dare's comments. I would just like to say that I was present at the zoning hearing board meeting. I think it was in like February or March of last year when this item, her item came up on the agenda for Resolution 21-2022. And there was a lot of opposition from her neighborhood group. And I bore witness to that, and I would just like to reinforce that there was opposition to that project at the zoning hearing board level. I'm here on behalf of Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United for Resolution 14-2022, which is the Jefferson Street Land Development Project. Myself and our former president, Joyce Vanderhorst-Gamble, were in attendance at that zoning hearing board meeting, as were two other members of our community who are residents in immediate area of that location. And we were all in opposition to that project. Yet, again, here is another clear example of an underrepresented and underserved community that voices opposition to multiple projects, and they were approved. And then here we are at city council level, which is our last recourse. You are our last recourse. And we are here telling you that members of the community were in opposition of these projects. And that's a question that you ask repeatedly. And this is exactly why the planning commission meetings, the zoning hearing board meetings are supposed to be recorded so that you can see what we have all been experiencing. And yet, in spite of an ordinance passing, and Asher saying he was available to record those meetings, they still have not been recorded. The April zoning hearing board meeting was not recorded. The planning commission meeting last week was not recorded. Why? This is, was our exact concern that was raised when this, I came before you and said that a loophole was slipped into that ordinance by Neil, and it's been proven as fact. The meetings are not recorded, being recorded. Now, one reason that we, the community is opposed to the Jefferson Street project is traffic with the new Department of General Services building and the Dauphin County Human Services building that is right there. The other reason is that the design is the second floor apartments. The bedrooms don't have any windows. The only egress is through a door that goes into the main living area. Like, that sounds like a prison cell to me. I don't know about the rest of you, but who wants to live and sleep in a room with no windows? I don't know about the rest of you, but who wants to live and sleep in a room with no windows? I mean, I understand that the majority of David Puffley's rooming houses, he serves the reentry population. But if I was coming out of prison, I wouldn't want to go right back into a prison cell. A room that's like a prison cell. That's not good for mental health. And, um. In addition, um. These are all, go again. These are all of David Puffley's open dockets for his properties. He owns over 100 properties in the city. And these are open dockets. Some of them are go years back. It's quite a stack. And they are still sitting open in inactive status because our district justices haven't brought them forward or taken any further action on them. And also, I have filed a right to know request and got the list of rooming houses. We all know that David Puffley owns more than one rooming house, yet he's only paying a permit for one. Now, since I've been working with my friend Rafika Muhammad here, who is on our Environmental Justice and Advisory Board, and we have been tracking illegal dumping in the area. This is the lot at 15th and Walnut Street. This is the, this is the huge dump pile on 15th and Walnut that is a lot owned by David Puffley. Now, why would you approve and reward bad behavior? This is what we teach our kids, right? So if he has multiple code violations, illegal dump site in an e-job community, in an environmental justice community. By the way, Wednesday at Camp Curtin YMCA from 1:00 to 4:00, Secretary McDonald from D E P will be here. And we will be taking a tour with him, led by Ms. Rafika Muhammad, showing him the environmental injustices that have been taking place in our community. So, again, Camp Curtin Neighborhoods United is opposed to the approval of the Jefferson Street project owned by David Puffley. And, um. With respect to the new ordinance that was passed on requiring the recording of the planning commission and zoning meetings, I fully expect that the zoning board meeting on Monday, next Monday, will be recorded. And that also, in accordance with other third-class cities in Pennsylvania, all written decisions and minutes dating back to 2015 should be added to the website, the zoning board website. And I might add that since that ordinance was passed, we have become less transparent because all of the agendas and public packets for 2021 have been removed. So why are we being less transparent since that was passed? I am now requesting that all of the written decisions of the zoning board dating back to 2015 are added to the zoning board website in addition to the minutes. And if we can find time to make TikTok videos, why can't we find the time and the resources to follow a city ordinance and record planning commission and zoning meetings? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session of April 26, 2022. Are there any revisions to the minutes, council members? Hearing done, the minutes stand approved. We will begin reports of our committees this evening. I will share a report of the administration committee on the work session of May 3, 2022. On Tuesday, May 3, 2022, the administration committee met to discuss Resolution 26 of 2022. Resolution 26 of 2022 is a resolution confirming the appointment of Stephen Y. Akima Agba Esquire to serve as the Senior Deputy Solicitor, City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Akima Agba was present on behalf of the administration. Mr. Akima Agba introduced himself and provided an overview of his resume and legal background. Mr. Akima Agba is a seven-year city resident. He has spent the majority of his legal career with the Governor's Office of General Counsel. His primary background is in government contracts and procurement. He also has regulatory experience and administrative law experience. Council members asked questions regarding current, his current workload within the city compared to previous work with two state agencies, municipal level issues compared to state government issues, Law Bureau improvements, the percentage of litigation and percentage of plaintiff cases, modernization of city ordinances, assistance with council members with drafting and implementing policy. Mr. Akima Agba responded by sharing that in his current role, he works directly with the chief executive of the city, Mayor Williams, offering direct counsel among other duties. A primary goal of Mr. Akima Agba's is to organize the city's contracting process by standardizing contracts with the procurement office. I encourage my colleagues to support the appointment of Mr. Stephen Akima Agba Esquire as the Senior Deputy City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Akima Agba's appointment will assist the city solicitor in carrying out the daily needs of the city. This concludes the report of the administration committee. Next, we will hear a report from Chair Green on the work session of May 3, 2022.
Thank you, President Bowers. On May 3 of 2022, the Budget and Finance Committee met to discuss Resolution 25 of 2022, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Mayor Deuce, P C, for the purpose of providing audit preparation services for the City of Harrisburg. This company has provided audit services for us in the past. And the finance department said they would like to continue to work with them since they have knowledge of the city finances and auditing procedures. I believe it was Councilwoman Daniels who had a question about if we're following best auditing practices as we like to switch our audit firms every five years. The administration responded that we're currently in the middle of the contract with our auditing firm, which has option for two one-year renewals. And at that point, if we'd like to switch our audit preparation firm, that we should probably review it at that time. I would ask my colleagues to support this resolution as we will need someone to help us prepare for this audit coming up. Also, we were given a quarterly report for the first time. I don't know if it was ever, but at least in a very long time, we were given a quarterly budget report by our finance department, which said that right now our spending is at about 25% and our revenues are a little higher than we expected. But a lot of it is due to people paying their taxes earlier and that our collection rate for our refuse is actually increased from last year. That concludes the report from the Budget and Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Green. Our final report this evening will come from Chair Madsen on the work session of May 3, 2022.
Thank you, President Bowers. On Tuesday, May 3, the Public Works Committee was given a presentation regarding the state's project from Dowd Engineering and Percy Gulak representing the project. The presentation gave an overview of the timeline of events, a status update on where we are currently, and emphasized that there were four main priorities for this project. One being Vision Zero, eliminate pedestrian deaths. The second, maintain the present on street parking and access for physically disabled. Third, provide for vehicle drop-off at the schools between 16th and 17th Street. And fourth, accommodate bicycle travel on Long Station. New design will come in phases. Phase one will be stakeholders will engage, obtain feedback based on two or three layouts. Present will be PNDOT, city officials, residents with the project area and bicycle clubs. When finished, phase one will end with a single chosen layout. Phase two will involve developing the design details based on chosen layout and obtaining resident early approvals. Phase three, budgeting and negotiating. After the presentation, council asks questions. Council's questions focused on timeline, around getting feedback, process, around citizens engagement, clarification on process and timeline for completion of work, parking. Of note, council got clarification from the administration that the project is a $1 million project. The city has put in half the costs. In order to receive match funding, the city must comply with state regulations, which include bike lanes. We did get clarification. The question was asked if the city could fund the project on its own and not have to comply with certain state regulations. But we got clarification from the department that even if the city were to fund the project with just city funds, it would likely have to comply with PNDOT's feedback. Oh, excuse me. If we got clarification that if the city solely funds the project, that we still have to comply with the state's regulations because it is a state road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Madsen. We will now move to ordinances for first reading. We have none. Ordinances for amendment, we have none. Ordinances for final passage, we have none. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution 14 of 2022. Mr. Wetrowski, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 14 of 2022 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development and lot consolidation plan to rehabilitate an existing building into a 22-unit multifamily dwelling and construct a parking lot with 20 off-street parking spaces.
Thank you. As we mentioned, council members, we will suspend the rules for discussion. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll defer to Chair Daniels.
Thank you. Is Mr. David Puffley here with DNF Realty? Could you please, could you please come to the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So on behalf of the city council, I spoke with Mr. Puffley and his representative regarding an extension of the time on this project. Right now, it would be deemed approved on June 3. There are court proceedings, which the council is aware of, that Mr. Puffley's firm is involved in to address various code violations. Those hearings are all in May. And so they have agreed to a 30-day extension passed to, that is technically July 3rd or 4th, depending how we count it. But the matter should then be wrapped up in time for the June meeting of council to consider this in context of the outcome of those proceedings. So I had requested of them that they would agree to that extension the council asked for. I got an affirmative from Mr. Puffley. And I just want him to confirm that, that he's agreeable to that.
That is true.
Do you think we could have that in writing before the May 24 council meeting?
We'll do an email back and forth.
And any form of writing?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Thank you so much. So we'll go ahead and I'll ask President Bowers to withdraw this resolution from today's agenda. And, uh, pending a written confirmation of the extension, acceptance of the extension.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Puffley.
I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 20 of 2022. And since there was some commentary and questions regarding Resolution 20 of 2022 and Resolution 24 of 2022, I'd like to ask Ms. Asian Kaufman Lewis, our current analyst, if you could please come forward. I will suspend the rules for discussion of both of those resolutions. Mr. Wetrowski, could you please read Resolution 20 of 2022 and Resolution 24 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 20 of 22 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with the research foundation of the city, University of New York on behalf of National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College to provide consulting services to help reduce gun violence in Harrisburg. Resolution 24 of 2022 is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the purpose of developing and implementing a group violence intervention strategy to help reduce gun violence in the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Please come forward just for discussion. I do, would like to entertain another motion to suspend the rules for discussion of these two resolutions.
I move to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Just wanted to clarify, we did have a work session where we discussed Resolution 20 of 2022 when it was in the Public Safety Committee. It is now moved to the Administration Committee. I would like to move forward and vote on this resolution along with Resolution 24 of 2022. So if you could just please provide a brief overview, just as a refresher for our residents and for council members, of what Resolution 20 will do. And then Resolution 24 of 2022, it's my understanding that we should have received this one first. So I just wanted that clarification on the record, please.
I'll start with Resolution 24, I think, because as you said, that probably should have come to you first. So I do apologize for that. We had our former Director of Community Relations and Engagement, Anna White. And I had spoken about submitting a grant application to PCCD, Pennsylvania Crime and Code, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency regarding a strategy that we were hoping to implement here in Harrisburg, the group violence intervention strategy. The original application went in in October, it was October 14. And at that time, it was, it was a Survey Monkey application. So our understanding was that once they approved sort of that initial application, then we would be asked to submit a formal application. And then at that time, we would, we would understand whether or not we received the grant. Instead, what happened was a press release was released early December, I believe it was the first or the second, saying that we did receive the grant and the formal application was kind of almost like a formality, it appeared, because supposedly we had already received the grant. So, so then it just became a kind of a rush to submit all the documentation that we needed to formally receive the grant. That formal submission was made on December 2. And so at that point, we have submitted everything that we need to formally receive this grant. All the documentation is at PCCD. We have received a letter informing us that the grant was awarded. This grant is tied, as I said, to the group violence intervention strategy in particular and its implementation here in Harrisburg. That strategy is a evidence-based strategy. It does have a lot of research behind it. And that was the reasoning behind former Director White's decision to put forward that particular strategy here in Harrisburg. So along that line, Resolution 20 is to hire the consultant who will help us kind of set up the strategy here in Harrisburg. That is through the National Network for Safe Communities. And they are pioneer of this strategy. They've been doing it for a long time and have kind of, over the years, refined it into this particular group violence intervention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the overview. I just want to make sure council members don't have any questions regarding either before we move forward with the vote. I'll begin to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes. Do you feel it would be complicated to keep up with fidelity to the original application, like the original plan? Or will there be a new plan developed as we go through with the counseling?
I think that we can have fidelity to the general model. But obviously, once a consultant comes in and is able to kind of do their analysis of what's, what's going on in Harrisburg and, and what we need to focus on and what our strengths and weaknesses are here. I think that, that there may be some changes to the I think that, that there may be some changes to the strategy. Again, as long as you're kind of seeing, as long as you have fidelity to their general model and strategy, it does appear from other cities that they've been able to kind of implement whatever it is that they need in particular, since obviously every city isn't, isn't going to have the same problem.
Absolutely. And I had the pleasure to be on the call with you, with the reps. A very informative and a lot of things that were brought up in the previous work session tend to be true, but it's just a success of the ability of city to city. So with that question, I guess it goes to Commissioner Carter. Do you feel with our current complement, we'd be able to keep up with everything that the program, as far as the overhaul demands of the city? Would we be, okay, okay. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No, just, so just to clarify, resolution twenty-four is the larger overarching structure and resolution twenty is really the sub-grant, the contract of the contract. Am I reading?
So they're, they are interrelated. So the basic, the basic relationship is this. The administration applied for a grant and as part of the grant application, they had to have this contract, had to get this contract. So it's, you could view it that way, but they're really more wanting, we couldn't have gotten this grant without having this contractor. So it's almost just a, an extension, a natural progression from the grant to the contract. We got the money to use the money for this contract. Now, I understand that there's, there's additional monies for.
Is it not a reimbursable grant?
It is reimbursed.
Okay, so we would have to put the money for first.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so it's not overarching, but just it flows from the grant flows to the contract.
Yes, we did build in some additional funding for any, any needs that we might have as a city or social services or project manager to kind of oversee this strategy.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen Majors, any questions?
Yes, thank you. So again, just so I'm clear, the grant award amount for resolution twenty-four includes what exactly? I know we're looking at funding resolution twenty with that. How much is that overall grant number?
The overall grant number is five hundred thousand dollars.
And how much is, how much money is being allocated for resolution twenty?
That's two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay. The, for resolution, and I'm sorry I'm going back and forth, but I'm just trying to make sure I'm, get this clear. So resolution twenty, we are looking, excuse me, resolution twenty-four, which is the overall grant, that the performance period is how long?
The grant period began on January first of this year and it runs for two years.
Okay, so we have it through December of two thousand twenty-four. Or? Twenty-three, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, for, for to spend the money. Yes.
Right, to spend, to allocate the funds.
That's correct.
So, okay, two-year performance period. With, so two hundred and ten thousand dollars for resolution twenty, what are we looking to do with the additional two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that is sitting in that grant?
So we have budgeted, as I mentioned briefly, for a project manager to oversee the strategy. There's going to be a lot of moving parts as we kind of get the entire model set up here in the city. So that was, that was a portion of it. We built in some money for any social services if we have group members that are identified that perhaps don't have insurance or, you know, aren't covered to access these services that they might need to reduce their retaliatory violence. We have that built in.
Okay.
A few other things.
Okay, okay. So I guess we can expect to get additional resolutions sent down from the city on how those additional funds are going to be utilized. Correct, so we're ratifying the submission of the grant application. That grant application includes all of those pieces. You have, you already have those, those funds allocated, that additional two hundred and ninety thousand is, is identified in the document.
We, yeah, we do have that additional two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and we have submitted a formal budget to PCCD. They are flexible with the budget. And so if we find that we need a little bit more in this category as opposed to a different one, then we can, we can move the funds around and then request reimbursement.
Okay. And I think similar to a, a resident's comment that came up earlier. So we go through this process, we do these, we have this initiative, we get a plan in place. And then come two thousand twenty-four, there's no funding for the continuation of any of those strategies that were put in place. I guess, are we looking to explore ways in the future to, I guess, absorb some of these costs? Or will we also be pursuing additional funding down the line as these? So whatever the outcome of this project is, so we have a manager, is that a person we're bringing on full-time to become a part of the police department, or they're just going to manage his grant? And when the grant is gone, we don't have anyone to do the implementation.
The way it would be set up currently is you'll, you'll see something come back before you as an independent contractor is how we have that set up currently, using the grant funding. I believe at, at the end of the grant period, we're hopeful that we will have seen some results and that this person may be able to be absorbed within the police department budget.
Okay, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you, Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. A few of my questions have already been answered, but I will go back to our conversation on the work session. And one of the things that I really targeted on was the pre-work. Have we started doing that pre-work? Have we started having discussions with other entities? Have we started gathering that information so that they're not showing up and we're just starting the work? And if so, can you tell me what we've done?
Sure, absolutely. I haven't started gathering all of the data yet, although I do have a good portion of it just from other requests that have come through. We have had a lot of conversations with other entities. We've had multiple meetings with the District Attorney's Office and probation and parole to kind of discuss the strategy and how we might work together. We've had conversations with the Criminal Justice Advisory Board and all of the entities on there. So they're all very interested in working with us. Dauphin County Human Services. We've had a lot of initial conversations with people. We're just kind of waiting to get everything approved here so that we can really get the work started.
Okay. I know one kind of looking over, over this strategy, a lot of it is analysis, it's data analysis. So a lot of these conversations have, we have documentation, like, do we have numbers? Do we have, I don't know, like, high charts, graphs to show like how people are connected? If a lot of this is based off of analysis, if it's like, I talked to this person and I've talked to these groups of people that you hit the ladder and leave tomorrow, does all that knowledge leave with you? And are we starting from square one? You know, like, how are we documenting this? You know, like, it can't be a one-man show, right? It can't be all based off of what you've done or, you know, information that you gather, knowledge you have in your head. What are we doing to make sure this is concrete information that can easily be analyzed? That's one. And two, have we already started putting meetings in place? So then when they show up, we kind of already have a timeline of, okay, well, we're looking to meet with the Department of Human Services on June first and we're looking to meet with the probation department on June ninth. Because two years goes by really fast. And of course, we could spend the money in two years, but if the results don't show up by the time the contract's done, the money's just gone and we're still left to analyze it ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely. We have not started the analysis yet because that's a big portion of what the consultant is going to do. They are going to come here and they're going to, they're going to look at the data that we have. I'm not sure exactly what data they're going to be looking for until we kind of get them here. But they are ready and willing to start with us as soon as we're able to contract with them. So I think we could, we could definitely hit the ground running pretty quickly. But unfortunately, until they're here, other than some initial conversations that we've had, it's been difficult to really go too much further down the, down the road because we don't know what we don't know at this point. And until they come here and kind of look at everything and give us this plan, I do believe that from my understanding of their general timeline, it does take a few months to get everything kind of set up, get all the players in place, get all that analysis done. But again, with those initial conversations, we do have a lot of interest in other entities within the city, within the county, in working with us on this strategy. So I'm hopeful that, that once we have their formal analysis and their implementation plan, that we can really hit the ground.
All right. I'm going to give, let's call it a very strong recommendation that we start now. Not so much with the analysis, but we can set up a consortium. We know who the players are. They are coming outside, they don't know who the players are. That's what they're relying on us for, right? So if we set up a consortium meetings where we're starting to have those conversations and invite them in, they don't have to identify the players. We don't have to spend money for them to identify the players. If they identify more along the way, we can invite them in. But I know the, the police department has like consortium meetings with different entities. I know that they have like leadership meetings up at Harrisburg University. Maybe we can get some of those on the books already. Then when they come in, they're joining our conversation and hearing what's going on, not that we're waiting for them to say, who should we talk to? You know, like you said, you had the initial meetings, we know who to talk to. So let's, let's put pressure on them and get them on our timeline, not wait for them to create one. Because, you know, time's ticking, you know, the grant started technically in January, here we are in May. So I kind of just worry about like times going. If we don't pass this today, it'll be June. If we don't pass it in June, it'll be August, right? So there are things that we can do and understand that they're not going to do anything until they're under contract, but the pay goes back to January, right? No, so if we contract with them today, it's a lump sum, right?
No, they do have. There is a payment schedule through the end of two thousand twenty-three so that we can pay them with the grant money. The contract, however, with them will run two years from the date that we sign it.
All right. So we'll have them from two years from the date that we sign it.
That is correct.
Even though the money will already be paid.
That is correct.
So I'd still like to get those things started, right? Get those conversations not just going, but let's get the dates on the books so that we can invite them in to join what we're doing. You know, like, let's, let's not wait for them to give us all direction. We kind of know which, where we need to start at, or else we wouldn't have written the grant, right? The grant lays things out pretty specifically, so we know kind of, like, we know the roadmap, we can start working on it. So that's just a suggestion of mine. Another question is kind of just what's the follow-up for the public, right? So we're having this discussion in public, the grant will be improved maybe in public. You know, we're having all of this conversation now, but then what? After the analysis is done, will the public hear? Will city council hear? What are the measurables that you guys might be coming back with and what can we expect to hear? So that we know the outcome of the project itself.
And I think that's also something that we are hoping that the consultant can give us an idea. We do have some measurable setup with PCCD, just in the grant funding and kind of what we're doing with that. But again, it's, it's, it's kind of the consultant that's going to help us lay out this roadmap of what, what they see in other cities, what they're measuring, what would make sense here in Harrisburg. The project manager, like I said, is going to be a big piece of this. Right now, it's kind of fallen to myself, Captain Hooper and Director Houston to kind of put all this together. But we're really hoping to get that project manager position posted and get a great candidate to bring back before you guys and hopefully get approved so that they can really hit the ground running on a lot of these things. Because that's, that's, that's what they're going to be doing, doing the measurables, doing the, setting up all the meetings, getting all those players to the table in a timely manner.
That also, maybe I'm pessimistic today, maybe it's just one of those days. But, I mean, that sounds great, but I know that right now hiring people is really hard. And I mean, great project managers probably have great project management jobs that might not just be one specific project, right? And then hoping to be absorbed. So I do kind of wonder, do we have like a roundabout timeline on how long it might take to hire a project? If a lot of this is hinging on the consultant and the project manager essentially working together, right?
We're hoping.
Then when I see a ticking timeline, it makes me go, well, timelines tick faster than people apply. And, you know, what is our backup plan? So in the meantime, are you going to be the forefront person that's, that's taking on this role? Is it someone else from the police department that will be assisting you? Like, what's our timeline until we get, until we get our project manager?
Well, since the grant was housed under the Community Services Division, it'll be us. So more than likely, you'll see me again or Director Houston, she's been a big help or Captain Hooper, whoever, whoever's been able to kind of take it and run with it.
Okay. I would ask this of Commissioner Carter, if you could get us maybe some specifics on like how this is going to run until we get a project manager, or maybe you'll be the one who types it up and, and he just looks over it, however you guys want to do it. But, you know, just how things are going to be done until that point. Because I know the, if I'm correct, when we created your position, we had a lot of high hopes for what, what was going to be done in that office. And if it gets hedged down with now project manager for a grant, you know, I don't want to overwhelm you with your current duties and adding more duties on where it's like, well, we can't do what we thought we were going to do with that position because it's really another position under a different title. Which is like a roundabout way of saying, if you're doing a job that you're not supposed to be doing, then it's hard for you to do your job. And so I want to make for sure that doesn't happen either. And I don't want to sound like I'm like against this, I'm actually for this grant. I want to see gun, you know, I want to see the intervention, right? I want to see the strategies, I want to see the analysis. I think it's something that's needed in the city because a lot of what we're doing, we haven't had the opportunity to sit down and really analyze in a structured way, right? Because it's always something going on, there's always something else that you're pulled out to. Our officers are, are very busy, they do a great job at what they do. We need more. So if anyone out there is looking to be a police officer, Harrisburg Police Department is looking for great officers. And so I don't, I don't want it to be taken that, like, I don't support this. But I also understand that when you have strict timelines, that you have to pre-plan. If you don't pre-plan, next thing you know, your essay's due and it's the day, you know, your teacher's asking for the paper and you haven't started it, right? And so I just want to make for sure we don't get ourselves in that position. So if we can do a couple of things, get some of these consortiums together and set dates so that we can invite the, the contractor to our meetings rather than waiting for them to provide it to us, start thinking about some of our measurables because project manager is great and it's optimistic. And I hope to be able to get one tomorrow if this is passed today. But in a realistic world, it's going to take some time. So we need to already have some of those measurables that we're thinking of so that when the consultant comes, we're telling them some of the things that we could use while they're telling us some of the things that they see as well. So they can kind of be, you know, both ways relationship. And then letting us know some of those reportable measurables that'll be coming back to council. So we can keep an eye on what's going on and also so the public can be aware of the programs going on within their community. And I think, I think I'm going to wrap it up there.
And Madam Vice President, just, just to let you know that the, the contract, Exhibit A of the contract, it does lay out a number of deliverables from the consultant that, that are tangible and that encompass citizen engagement, stakeholder engagement, etc. Some of the things you were asking for are built into the Exhibit A of the contract. And so that would directly be coming to city council and the citizens of Harrisburg in general.
All right. Do we have a timeline? Is it going to, is it going to come with our quarterly reports that our Councilman Rodriguez?
Well, I mean, it's something I certainly could. I mean, there, there are a number of different deliverables and it talks about some quarterly reports, talks about weekly reports, talks about daily reports. As far as a not, not in the pie chart, for instance, but as far as daily engagement with the citizens, weekly engagement with certain stakeholders and the consortium, the consortium you were talking about, talks about quarterly, weekly, daily engagement with a lot of these stakeholders. Now, if there's a certain way that city council wants it packaged, it can certainly be packaged in that way. However, as far as specifically built into the contract, what you're discussing is there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Madsen, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Madam President, most of my questions have been answered and the comments I was going to make also, which is great. So I just had one small question with the project manager, just like thinking ahead and how much would their pay be? So just thinking of how much we would have to absorb after the grant. Sorry to have you shuffle.
Sure that I was. I want to say I believe we budgeted for seventy thousand. Okay.
Thank you. Now, when you, I guess, so when you're saying independent contractor, I think of like another business or, but it's not that, I understand. But you would be doing open interviews and be posting the applicant, not the application, but I'd be posting the job and then people would apply.
Exactly, and then we would hold the interviews. The independent contractor is basically because there would not be a city employee. So, you know, we wouldn't pay for their insurance. So, um, you know, we wouldn't pay for their insurance or, um, taxes. They're, they would be responsible for all of that, um, themselves. We just pay the salary.
I understand. Okay.
Yeah. And that'll definitely have to come back for you guys.
Right. Yeah. And the way I, and then I'm thinking the way we, um, we're going to really have to motivate somebody once you say you're not paying the insurance, like that goes into all of it. So, okay. Thank you.
No further questions. Sorry. No, no, that's okay. Councilman Majors, you had additional questions?
Uh, I guess questions and a comment, just, just to, you know, I guess, put another, uh, stamp on what Vice President Green was mentioning. You know, as we're looking to do this, um, you know, the onus does fall on your division. Quite frankly, it was your division that applied for the grant. We staff it, um, you know, we want to make sure that that division is working well. And, you know, I think the onus is on our Community Services and Community Policing Division to have stakeholders already lined up to commit. The only way a project like this works is with community engagement, trusted partners, trusted agents in our community that have a sense of comfort working and having conversations with law enforcement. And if it's not the Community Policing Division, I don't know who else it is. I mean, that's literally the, the job title. So, you know, the, the whole hoping and hope is not a plan and we are dealing with real issues and serious issues in terms of gun violence in our community. So, um, again, the questions aren't us, you know, trying to be pessimistic and not wanting to do this. It's okay. We know we're dealing with real issues of gun violence and we've had, uh, you know, 10 homicides in, in our city in the first four months of, of, of the year. This isn't something that is, um, that we need a real action plan on how to deal with. We want to, you know, we have a group that we're looking to bring in. I mean, the contracts and the grants are, we're essentially ratifying it. So it's already done. Money's coming, but we need to make sure we're identifying these folks, um, in our community partners already because that's one less thing that John J. or who, or that group needs to identify. They can add, but we should already know who a lot of the players are that should be coming to the table. So, um, look forward to, to this. And then also, as was stated, setting out those meetings, right? We're going to need community engagement. And, you know, again, our community's been through a lot. Relying on some outside entity to come in and tell us what to do, we've done that before. So again, having some of those people already lined up, ready to converse, have conversations with that group is going to do a lot to move things forward rather than sitting and waiting because we could, you know, folks have sat and we had people come in, do things in our community leave, and then we're still in the same spot that we are. So, um, look forward to additional conversations and working with our Public Safety Chair and our President on moving a lot of these initiatives forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for being here this evening and answering our rapid fire questions. Thank you, Council for your engagement. Yes, Councilman Rodriguez.
I'd like to make one more statement if that's okay.
That's fine.
Um, the, uh, just to piggyback off of Councilman Majors' point, not only knowing the entities that will be partnering to be efficient in doing this, but also having a, let's say, a device or a measure for accountability on their end. As you know, we've spoken with many cities and they said there's some nonprofits that haven't reported back in over eight months. So I encourage CLAC, our Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Council, to be formed, and that would be our precaution as a measure to hold these individuals accountable. So when we need measures or metrics, they can provide it a bit easier. Um, just a suggestion, but I highly look forward to it.
Absolutely. And I do know that that is kind of built into what their strategy is, is, is also measuring the partners that we're working with, make sure that their, their interventions are being, are effective as well and that they're helping the people that we're sending their way.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you again. I just wanted, want to bring something to everyone's attention and then make a comment. So just like I noted during the work session where we discussed this, please visit page 11 of the resolution in the contract. Exhibit A, it clearly outlines the scope of services, which are a lot of the things that we've discussed this evening. For example, strategic advising, local operational support, there's goal setting, there's training. All of these measures are here in the scope of services. But if we don't execute this agreement, it's just merely a pay, page 11. Um, so I, I want to be clear on why I moved these two resolutions to the administration, Administration Committee, excuse me. I might move them because I realized that the timeline is ticking. We said that, um, technically it's, the clock started January of 2022. It is now May. Um, you've stated before that it, there could be like a three to six month window to gather everyone. We know that we've had, um, there have been a series of town hall meetings to discuss gun violence within the community. Many of the stakeholders that we would like to engage were present at these meetings. I don't want to lose the momentum. They're eager and waiting for something to occur. So I would like to, um, maintain that momentum. And I think that by moving forward with both of these resolutions this evening, um, we can have the summer to plan, whatever that looks like, but I just don't want to lose the momentum and the interest of the people that are on the ground doing the work, um, in duplicating effort, and we can all come together and really see a great change within our community. So I just wanted to note that. At this time, I will entertain a motion to return to our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So we have Resolution 20 of 2022. Mr. Patrowski, could you please reread that?
Sure. Resolution 20 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with the Research Foundation of City University of New York on behalf of National Network for Safe Communities at John J. College to provide consulting services to help reduce gun violence in Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final comments or questions before we vote? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Sorry, I thought it was on, yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Resolution 20 passes.
Thank you. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 21 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 21 of 2022 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development and lot consolidation plan to convert the existing building located at 100 North 13 Street into a 12-unit multifamily dwelling and to consolidate 112 North 13 Street and 109, uh, to 119 and a half Linden Street with the same.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns relative to Resolution 21 of 2022?
I have a, um, huge concern on the parking and just not understanding why they've been given, um, permission to only have, I guess it's 10 spots, 11 spots. It does change. I'm not sure, but that's a huge concern for me because parking is a huge concern in the Royal Terrace and Summit Terrace, um, area. So I don't know what the ordinance is or if I could, if we could ever.
This is the distinction between what the role of the City Council is and the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board and the planning commission operate under the municipal planning codes. The zoning hearing board is a quasi judicial body. Uh, to get relief there, you have to come in and prove your case to the satisfaction of the majority of the board. That happened last year, uh, last August and its decision was issued that they had proved their case to the board and therefore they were given the relief, which you're entitled to under the law if you prove your case on an application. So the parking issue is now their right because they established it. The time to challenge and appeal, that is long over and that is what's there. Um, and our zoning code is a, a creature of the fact that there's the MPC, municipal planning code. That's, that's what authorizes the city to have one and puts it in place. Um, just like they also got relief from Harb, if you remember the last time we were here, they made their case there and that recommendation came to council from Harb. So there is a difference between those things. So, you know, they have, they have established a right to the number of parking spaces with the evidence they put onto the board. And the plan, as I understand it, that submitted to council therefore complies with all the provisions of our ordinances for what had to be satisfied to check off the boxes in order to get a plan approved at, at this level at the council. The landowner plan is different.
Thank you. I guess then that's still a bit confusing because, um, I believe the construction or the developer's name, Rowan, he had said at the last meeting that he didn't ask for, um, less parking, but it was, um, suggested or given, um, at the board meeting, but it wasn't what he asked for.
So, um, I guess maybe I could explain a little bit better. So their initial proposal was 14 parking spaces.
Right.
Right? But our zoning code requires setbacks for properties. And part of the reason it requires setbacks is for us to help facilitate, manage our stormwater a little bit better. So, um, the city came, the, yeah, uh, came back and said, no, no, 14 is too much. Um, we were going to, to, to manage to keep the setbacks, you'll have eight parking spaces instead. But then they had their hearings and the community said they wanted parking spaces. They preferred parking spaces over setbacks. So the, the 12 is a compromise. What we currently require is for every unit, there should be one parking spot and then for every five, one guest, one guest space. This property is kind of trapped between the requirements for the setbacks and the requirements for the parking spaces. So right now the compromise that they have is 12 spaces, not, not 13. The 13th space is one that's created because of the construction of the, the red, the little corner cutout. So, um, so that's where things are. So the ordinance is for 12 spaces, not 13. Um, and the, the 13th one is just something that happens out of the construction process, basically. Um, so that's where, where things are.
Thank you both for further explaining. Thank you.
So, you know, there's, when you're thinking about it, you have to think about for this property to come into compliance with all of our rules, the person would have to build fewer than eight units in that, inside of that building because the exterior has to stay the same because it's reasonable from all around.
Right.
So, um, so it could be pulling, losing, you know, seven spaces because seven and a guest. Yeah. Um, yeah. So it would be seven, for, for it to be fully compliant. So that's kind of a, the negotiation that's happening in, at all of the different levels.
Thank you. I'm fine. That's good. Thank you.
Any other, you good with your questioning?
Yes.
Okay. So I just have a comment. I don't have a question, but, um, I'd just like to thank Ms. Loretta Barbie Dare for being present to speak on behalf of the Summit Terrace, uh, Neighborhood Association. Um, so her thoughts on the original parking, of course, are pertinent in my mind as well as I went back to my notes and the stated or estimated rent for these, um, units will be between 1,000 and 1,100 dollars. And in my estimation, I believe that that would leave our residents cost burden. Um, in the discussion during the work session, the developer noted that it would be a beautiful building and I responded then and I'm saying the same thing now. It's, yes, it's going to be a beautiful building, but if no one can afford to live in it, then we just have a beautiful building. So I just wanted to note those, um, two things. Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Just from the solicitor, um, just for clarification for the public, if council were to vote down the measure, would the applicant be able to file an appeal? And what do you think the outcome would be of that appeal?
The applicant would have the right to appeal to the county police court for the denial of the application that complies with the ordinance. I mean, that is what, that's what due process is. This is part of due process, but they would, um, I will not predict the outcome because my job is to defend the actions of the council.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
No. Thank you.
Resolution 21 passes.
Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 24 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 24 of 2022 is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the purpose of developing and implementing a group violence intervention strategy to help reduce gun violence in the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you, council members. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns relative to Resolution 22? I mean, 24 of 2022.
Just have a comment?
Yes, Councilman.
I look forward to working with our police department as the Chair of Public Safety as we move forward with this. Uh, I know there was a lot of back and forth. As long as we can execute with the citizens' best interest in mind, I look forward to updates and even press release as we announce it to the citizens, um, with your team. So thank you for all the work throughout.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, seeing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Resolution 24 passes.
Thank you. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 25 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 25 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Mayor Drusel, PC, for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, concerns related to Resolution 25 of 2022? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Resolution 25 passes.
Thank you. Mr. Patrowski, could you please read Resolution 26 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 26 of 2022 is a resolution confirming the appointment of Stephen Y. Akima Akbal, Esquire, to serve as the Senior Deputy City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 26 of 2022? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Patrowski, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Powers.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-six passes.
Thank you. We will now move to old business. Councilwoman Rawls.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to update and remind everybody of the Teen Summit that the Omega Psi, Omega Psi Phi fraternity and myself are having on May eighteenth at six o'clock to seven thirty P M. It will be at Camp Curtain Academy on twenty-nine hundred North Sixth Street. And this will be a place for teenagers and, well, youth and young adults to have their voices heard. It is youth centered. And if you would like to participate as a youth participant, you still have time. And you can email me at jrawlsharrisburgpa.gov. And we should, I hope to see all community members there on, on May eighth. It's for adults as well to participate in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business?
I'll just, quick notes, since, you know, one of our residents, Ms. Hunt, asked about the treasurer's budget. I just was able to look it up during our meeting. The appropriated budget for the treasurer's office was four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That was what was included as a total appropriation for the budget. And as was noted, they are an independent office and they, they choose the days that they are open.
May I? Just to, just for the public, since it's in discussion, there is in the forthcoming reallocation of the funding of an additional position there that's coming from the treasurer's office. So that position was zeroed out in the budget. So there will be additional manpower added if that is approved by council, you know, this June, I guess.
Do you have like an answer related to like the, the opening of the office? Because from my understanding, the administration, the mayor's office had indicated that the treasury was open, but the treasurer himself hasn't indicated that. So can you explain like why?
I cannot. I just know that the treasurer and the mayor are in discussions about it. I know that. I can't, I cannot tell you what the, what the decision was made. I understood they were having a meeting. I don't know if it was this week or not. That was the business administrator advised me of that Monday.
Well, glad to hear that. But are also as a part of budget negotiations and discussions, the treasurer was here. We asked him about his budget. He felt that the budget that was provided to us was sufficient. And, but I guess, I guess there's still no, is there? We could have this conversation further, but it's an additional position. Does that mean that the office will be open every single day?
I do not really answer that question.
Hopefully during the budget reallocation, the treasurer can come and speak to that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls, for the reminder of the Teen Summit. And thank you for the follow-up, Councilman Majors, on the treasurer's budget. We will now move to new business. Councilman Majors.
Oh, yes, thank you. Hold on one second. I'm sure I have all the information. So I just wanted to, to note that as a part of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, there was a piece passed that's called GetInternet.gov that can assist residents with their cable bills and high-speed internet access, which we all know. In this day and age, it's not a luxury. So it's, it's actually something that everyone needs to be able to be able to participate in our society. So twenty companies, including some that service the City of Harrisburg, particularly Comcast, have joined the Affordable Connectivity Program, which makes it needed access for low-income families possible, offering thirty dollars or less plans for high-speed internet. So if you go to GetInternet.gov, you can learn how to apply and be able to get either assistance or very low-cost, high-speed internet access. So and if anyone in the home is, your household is below, excuse me, is less than two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, you qualify. And for anyone in your home, if they're receiving SNAP, Medicaid, SSI, WIC, Appel Grant, veteran pensions, free and reduced loans, et cetera, they are all eligible to apply for this GetInternet.gov program. So again, it is GetInternet.gov. I just want our residents to know that. And I'll also communicate with our communications director to see if we can make a post so that that is something that would be accessible for residents in the city that may not have access or could need assistance with payment of any of their high-speed internet access. That's the only thing. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks for sharing the information about the Affordable Connectivity Program, Councilman Majors. I do have a few additional orders of new business I wanted to note. Please note that there will be no city council meeting next Tuesday, May seventeenth, due to Election Day. Our next legislative session will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. In reference to the State Street Construction Public Meetings, there have been three meetings that will occur in June. The first meeting will occur on Wednesday, June first, from six P M. to eight P M. at the Harrisburg School District Lincoln School, located at sixteen oh one State Street. The second meeting will be held on Monday, June sixth, from six P M. until eight P M. At the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Capo Omega Chapter Fraternity House, located at twenty twenty State Street. The final meeting will be held on Wednesday, June twenty-second, from six P M. until eight P M. Again, at the Harrisburg School District Lincoln School, located at sixteen oh one State Street. In addition to the public meetings, the administration has created a new website for residents to leave their concerns. Anyone can complete a public comment form. They're asking that your name and address, you are required to share those. And you also have the ability to upload attachments, including pictures. So that website is HarrisburgPA.gov backslash state dash street. Next, I just wanted to highlight a few upcoming events, so please mark your calendars. Dolphin County will host the First Annual Spring Neighboring Festival and Unity Cup Soccer Championship on Saturday, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, from eleven A M. until four P M. at Skyline Soccer Field, located on City Island. Next, Kevin Garnett's Hoop It Up, powered by three by three sixty Sports, is partnering with the City of Harrisburg in conjunction with the Harrisburg Bureau of Police and its Community Services Division. The Hoop It Up Harrisburg Three-on-Three Street Fest will be held on Saturday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-two, from nine A M. until nine P M. on City Island as well. Any other new business, council members?
No, I just, I'm sorry, you want to go, Councilman? I just had a, you, Madam President, President, you and Councilman Majors gave some great information, went on broadband, and you gave it about State Street. Is there any way we could get those as mailers for people, just so they have the websites at hand and the meeting dates? I'm not sure how we could make sure everybody gets that information.
I think that would be a request of the administration, but I'm happy to speak to the mayor and staff.
Thank you.
One additional note, I just was looking and had my email up and just wanted to note that, yes, today we received information, or information was shared, that the invitation to comment on the I eighty-three South Project Environmental Assessment was made available by Penn Dot. They are going to be hosting a couple of public, in-person public hearings. Those are scheduled to take place on May twenty-fifth. That's from three thirty to seven thirty P M. at the Penn Harris Hotel in Camp Hill. And then May twenty-sixth, at the Holden Garden Inn at Harrisburg East. That's on Techport Drive. And additionally, we have a website where individuals can provide any comments. That site will be up from May tenth today through June ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And that is Penn dot PA dot gov backslash I eighty-three South Bridge. Additionally, there will be physical copies that are available for the public to view. And I'll just note a few of the locations that will be in the City of Harrisburg that folks will have an opportunity to take a look at. So versus the Federal Highway PA Division, this is two twenty-eight Walnut Street, room five oh eight. The McCormick Riverfront Library, one oh one Walnut Street. At the City of Harrisburg Building here, at Ten More Second Street. The Klein Library, five thirty South Twenty-Ninth Street. And the Bethesda Mission Community Center, fourteen thirty-eight Hurst Street. And I know some of us, I got, I think, as serving as the previous public works chair, I believe I'm on the email side. I know I got that. But additionally, pass that information along to the Communications Director and ask that that at least be publicized at those locations. So residents have an opportunity to take a look and provide their, their comments on those, those projects. And as was already noted about the State Street project. So we are encouraging, continuing to encourage the public to, to comment on a lot of these projects that are state projects that happen to run through the City of Harrisburg. And we need to hear our input as well on how our residents feel about those projects. Thank you, and I apologize.
No, you're fine. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to encourage the residents watching to join us as Chair of Public Safety. Chair Ronald Johnson has started the Neighborhood Square Watch Group. And that will entail from Eighteenth to Twentieth and Dairy, all the way through to Eighteenth and Twentieth and Market, all the streets in between. We had our first meeting, joined by a few of the council members here, and it went fantastic. So we're encouraging all neighborhoods and neighborhood leaders to please join us, see what it's all about and how we could expand it. And just leaving on a note of, I encourage our Penn Dot representatives to please join our meetings because your input is highly valuable to the way we can move forward for those residents on State Street. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. This is just some exciting news on the, the ARPA funds. We received an email not long before our meeting that the mayor will be holding a press conference tomorrow at eleven A M. to discuss the four point two million dollars that the city is receiving in ARPA money, broken down into a couple of different categories, about fourteen million to help lower income city residents, about ten million dollars for beautification, parks and recreation, about nine million dollars for public safety, and about eight million dollars for lost revenue that's currently allocated in two thousand twenty-two budget. The administration will also be presenting to city council on May twenty-fourth at our city council meeting to discuss these topics as well. So tomorrow is going to be a press conference held here in the atrium for the public. And then there'll be more discussion on May twenty-fourth, where I'm sure you can ask more questions. I don't think it'd be many questions being asked tomorrow at the presentation. Tomorrow, it is at eleven A M. here at the atrium. I know they did put out a press release, so I'm sure to be on their social media and things as well. But since we were all here tonight, I thought I'd just announce it.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Anyone else? Okay, the time is seven fifty-three. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.